Alright, I guess I'll unmute you. And um since it's just two of us right now, do you have any specific questions personally that? You would like to kind of go over first?
Um yeah, I'm kinda stupid, so I'm kinda confused.
Hmm.
Um, I guess my first question. How do you decide between a two-tailed and one-tailed test?
Okay, um, so for two-tailed versus one-tailed test, um. There's like two different situations, I guess, in which you need to decide. One is if you're like reading a word problem. That like kind of gives you it and then the other would be kind of like theoretically if you were making your own, um. Like survey or whatever, so um in like a word problem, it will either ask, um, is there a difference? Or it will say directly, is it greater than? Or less than? So for these examples, if it's asking purely, is there a difference? This is two-tailed. Because it doesn't matter which way it's different, it's just different in some way. Whereas if it's if the word like problem or the question is asking you specifically for something that's greater than a certain number or less than a certain number or point, that's when you do one-tail. Because in that case, you're looking specifically in one direction, whether or not it fits the like critical area. And then um like kind of that like theoretical idea is like if you had to choose yourself, whether you wanted to do different or greater than or equal to, you would have to like ask yourself about what you're testing. So if you wanted to see like are people in a specific major having like a higher SAT score or something than the general population, then you might wanna do a one-tail test because you want to know specifically do they have a higher score? Whereas if it's like, um how do like kids with ADHD um perform on some sort of standardized exam or something like that? And in that case, maybe you wanna do two-tailed because you don't know if like a neurodivergent, um like disorder like that would make the student perform better or worse or neither, if that kind of makes sense?
Alright, so with that, I understand the on each tail, if you have the alpha level of point zero five, I understand the one point six five and the one point nine six, but how you determine the numbers for other alpha levels?
Oh, um. So where they get the values of the like one point nine six and the if it's like uh this is for two-tailed. And then the like one point six, what was it? One point six?
Five, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, for one-tail. Um, this uh should be in that appendix. To A, just on the like, um, in the values for like the this curve, just instead of looking for a Z value in the percentage, find the percentage first. That would be in the tails, so look for that like point zero five or point one or point zero one. And then uh take whatever Z score it says like next to that. Oh.
Uh-oh.
Did my connection go out there for a second?
It might have been mine since I'm not sure.
Um, I think it's better now either way, uh, but yeah, so uh in the appendix, you know what percentage you're looking for like in the tails, so in the appendix um table, look for like percent in the tail, find the like point zero five or point zero one or point one, and then take whatever Z value it says like next to that.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, so then, like for example, if you like looked in that table at or like um proportion in the tail and you found the zero point zero five, you would find the it's like one point six five where the Z score is.
Hmm.
Alright. Alright. So any other questions with the tails or anything then?
Uh, not right now.
Not right now, okay.
Um. This is probably concern, like it's concerning, but I'm not really sure what the Z tests and the T tests are. I was just very confused.
Oh, okay. Uh, I think I can kind of explain that, so, um. So when you test, let's say you take um an experiment on a group of people and you get, you know, one graph with a mean. And then you know that for the entire population, you would have like this normally distributed graph. And this is like the theoretical mean. Um, when you do a Z or a T test, uh you're basically trying to figure out um whether the mean that you found in your experiment is like significant or not in comparison to this like theoretical or like the entire population. Um, and so like um what that means is if you make this like third graph where you just plot like all the means and here's the like theoretical one. And the one you get in your experiment is here. And you decided that like your critical region is that like five percent alpha level and let's say like that's like here. Because your mean is in the critical region here that suggests that it is significantly different from the like population. So in the context of like an experiment, if I go back to the um that idea of like you're testing like a group of kids with ADHD on a test or something like that. If the mean score of the like group of kids with ADHD is like up here and you know the mean of the entire population is right here. You would be concluding that like kids with ADHD perform significantly like better score wise on this test.
Okay.
Um. Does, I'm not sure how clear that makes that necessarily, but does that kind of make sense in terms of like why?
I think so.
Okay. Um. And then the T test, it's like testing for the same thing. But the idea is if you know less about the population in general, you can't use that like standard um distribution, like the Z test doesn't work if you don't know a lot about the entire population. Which is why you use the T test instead.
What you said, the Z test doesn't work if you know the, if you know the whole population?
So if you, um if you know a lot of information about the entire population and what that means is like if for the population, the entire population, you know the mean and the standard deviation. Then you can do the Z test because you know a lot of information about the entire population. But for example, um if you don't know the standard deviation for the entire population, that's when you use a T test. Because a T test is more reliable if you don't know um like all the information about the entire population.
Okay. And so how does the critical value factor into a Z test?
So, critical value, um, so critical value as in like Z crit. Um. This is like the Z value that corresponds to your alpha. So if your alpha level is this point zero five, then your Z critical is that like one point six five. And then the critical region is just referring to like this part of the graph between that Z and wherever you're like testing.
Right now I'm referring to the value that you get when you multiply the Z critical by the standard deviation and then add one hundred or add mean.
Let's see. So the critical. Oh, wait, um.
It's like the the thing I'm looking at now is the equation that's um the Z critical equals X sub I minus the mean over the standard deviation.
Can you say that one more time? Uh, it's
Sorry.
Could you just say that one more time?
Yeah, it's these Zs uh critical equals X sub I minus the mean over the standard deviation.
Okay, um, so this is, um X sub I would be, um the mean of your test, so wait, where's my mouse? So this would be like X sub I. The, this would be the like X bar mean and then um the standard deviation would be if you know the standard deviations of the population. That's that, did I use the right symbols?
Um, well, the example here actually has like the mean and whatnot like put in, so I'm not sure. I don't see what the purpose of this.
And so this is calculation of, or wait. This would be the calculation of whatever value, um is your observed Z value. So I think this is actually the observe. Because the, um the the critical Z is going to just be based off of the alpha value. And then this equation where it's X sub I minus like the X with the bar over the standard deviation would be how you convert like, um whatever mean you find to a Z score, so that would be your Z obs or observed Z, I believe.
Uh, right now in the notes, uh lecture six point one, page eleven or slide eleven. And the way that's structured is that you're solving for X sub I. So it gives you both, well, there's two different examples. One of them has one point six five and the other has one point nine six. And they set that equal to the equation with a given mean and they given standard deviation. But I'm not like, I'm not sure what a critical value is.
Oh.
And the relevance of it is.
Okay, um, so uh, basically what you're looking at here is um. So, wait. Um, so the critical values, uh, the one hundred and the fifteen aren't like specific numbers. Those are like given numbers from an example. Um, basically, so one hundred would be like this X bar, it's like the theoretical mean of the entire population. That fifteen is like what you assume the um standard deviation of the entire population to be. Um. And then the plus or minus one point nine six is basically saying, um in the like very first example, the one with the one point nine six, you decided your um alpha level is five percent. And it's a two-tailed test, so that one point nine six is like the Z value for that like um two point five percent of the graph at either. Um. And then if you solve that equation for X sub I, which is what the two parts are below it. That's saying, um, what values in, uh the graph of like means um are equal to that like Z value, um, to say that more clearly because I know, I think I just said that really poorly. Um. If this is like the, um graph of the like standard uh distribution where it's like one, two, three, and negative one, negative two, negative three. And your like Z critical value is this like one point six five, for example, which would be like here. I'll put that in red so it's clear. Using the like, um calculation where you have this value equal to that X sub I minus the mean over sigma, which is this equation here, will give you the value if you made like the same graph, but instead of the mean being zero, the mean is one hundred. And these are, you know, one fifteen, one thirty. This way would be eighty-five, seventy. And then that calculated X sub I value would be this point, but just on this graph instead.
So what's the purpose of it?
Um, the purpose of a critical value would be if you want to do the Z test, but you wanted to like um how about? So usually when you do the Z test, you did the experiment and you have the mean of your experiment and you convert it and you um do the Z test that way. But if you wanted to know before you do an experiment what um mean values you're looking for to be significantly different, you could calculate it this way. And then when you did the experiment, if you found that your mean was like larger or smaller, you would know like right when you find the mean.
Okay.
Which I think that's, um definitely kind of confusing to think about, but basically it's like um instead of converting your um whatever statistic you find for the mean, instead of converting that to a Z value and comparing that to a Z value, you make a Z value, oh, a score on like here. And then when you get your actual score from whatever you're studying, you can say, oh, it's greater than that.
Okay. Another thing I was confused on is what the like equation is for the test.
Okay.
I just, I don't know if I'm just blind, but I just do not see it in the lecture.
Um, oh, uh, so basically for a Z test, uh it's not like an equation per se, but all it would be is like you have an alpha value. You make that a Z score. Um. And then let's say the mean you're looking at is like one thirty and the mean of the actual population is one hundred. And the standard deviation is fifteen, so then you'd come out with two as like the Z value for this example. All you're gonna do to do a Z test is take the two Z scores and just compare them. Um, so in this case, since this value is greater than this value um on the graph, it would look like uh here's like one point six five. Here's two. And this is like the critical region that you're looking at. Because the number you found is in the critical region. Then uh the Z test, you just go to that like table where it's like, um accept or don't accept the null hypothesis.
Okay.
Or specifically like in this example, you would be um rejecting the null because the point that you found is in the critical. Right?
So in this particular example, they have a right now, would the Z critical value be one point six five and is the observed be two?
Uh, the Z critical value would be one point six five and the Z observed would be two. Yes, you're right.
Okay. And then what would? So the the T test, I am also confused.
Yeah, um, so basically T test, um, T test. A lot of the calculations that you're going to do are going to feel similar um to what you're doing, but there's like small differences, um. Because in a T test, you will still be using this like X sub I, you will still be using the um mean of the population or the X bar. And it will still be over a standard deviation, but instead of sigma, which is if you know the standard deviation of your population, you have sigma. In this case, we have a standard deviation only of um the sample population. Um. So this part is going to be really similar in terms of finding the T values for the test itself, where it differs is, um basically that idea of the decrease of freedom. Which will basically always be equal to the um amount of specimen in the sample. So if you test thirty people, N would be thirty minus one, so twenty-nine. And what this is used for is, um the table appendix two B. You will find the critical T values. And the critical T values um do the like same job that the critical Z value does in the Z test. But you're just, it's a different number because the graph is like slightly different.
Okay, so does the does this value correspond exactly to the alpha level? So if your alpha level is point zero five, you would look at the point zero five proportions?
Yeah, so if your alpha level is point zero five, you would look at the point zero five in the appendix two B table. Just the same as you would with the appendix two A table for Z values. Um, the only difference is you need to calculate that degrees of freedom so that you're looking at like the right row in that table.
Hmm. She was this is stupid question, what is a P value?
P value uh P value is basically. Saying the probability of something happening. A P value is generally like. It's similar to like a Z observed score. But like your Z observed score. Is a Z value and the um proportion in the tail would be the P value. Because if you, for example, if you had like. An observed Z score of one point nine six. That means the percentage in the tail is like that um two point five percent or whatever. Or point zero two five, like not as a person. Point zero two five is your P value. Because that's the like percentage in the tail or it's the probability of something happen.
So. Pretty much um you use the Z test when you have the. More population information and the T test may have more sample information.
Uh, yes, and like specifically, it's just that like standard deviation. That makes the difference, so if you have a standard deviation. And it's for the population. You do a Z test, if you have a standard deviation, but it's for the sample, then you do a T test.
Okay. Um, I think that's all my questions that I have about this, I know that. Someone was asking that are. I don't know if you wanted to record that or not.
Yeah, uh. I think I will record talking about that no matter what, just to put it up um. If you wanna stay, obviously you can, if not, I could just try to explain it. By myself, is it's recording? But yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I really appreciate it.
Yep, see you at class tomorrow. Alright. R. Let's see if I can find. Some R notes here. Okay. So R is going to apply to number three. And number four in the homework and we will just describe this in terms of the homework uh. Without giving explicitly the answer. So for number three, it says you have however many volunteers um. You have the results where you know the mean. For the test for the population. You know the population variance and you know uh. Or you have a way to calculate the mean for your um sample set. So what you're gonna wanna do for three. Basically is a Z test. Similarly to the part I was talking about before. Z test is done when you have a standard deviation for the population. Um, so question three, basically it's going be more or less a couple of simple. Math equations, you can do it in R to make it easier um, I think you can. Probably do this by hand if you wanted to, but um. Looking at. R itself. This would be like. For you guys, if you have like notes from lecture, it's similar to the part where it's like the MU. Is equal to something. Uh, sigma is equal to something. Your X bar, which would be uh your sample mean is equal to something um. And then. Oh, and then the number for the population. Is equal to something. And then you just calculate a Z score. By putting all of this stuff here. Into an equation. And calculating that out. And then you can basically make a. Your conclusion based off of your Z score and the like theoretical Z score. Also just note the question asked, does our sample mean differ? So uh use that to determine whether or not you're doing a one-tail or two-tail test, okay? Uh, question four is more important because question three uh is done in R just to make math easier and to show it. Um, but you could do three by hand if you wanted to. Four is using the data sheet, which is why uh it's a little harder or different. So yeah. Alright, so the one question for four is, does our sample mean math score? Differ from the population math score? Now. Uh, the question gives you the mean of the population, which is Mu or Mu. And it's forty five. It gives you a significance level to use, it's the ninety five percent or alpha equals point zero five. Since you don't, you aren't given a standard deviation or a variance for the population here. Um, you just know that you have to get a standard deviation. From the um. Data set itself, so it's going to be a T test. And if you remember from lab, there is a command. Explicitly for doing the T test. So there you go, um, yeah, great. I guess we're done.